Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, just had a couple of comments. Wanted to recognize a member of the RSU One staff, Wesley Trundy, who's been recognized as the BAH Citizen of the Year. Someone who contributed a great deal to our school. I guess is also very active of the community as well. So congratulations to Wesley. And also two students from Morse. I don't know if I have the pronunciation right, but Brianna Ringrose and Taylor Bisson were also recognized for their Random Acts of Kindness campaign. So congratulations to those folks. Would like to introduce our newest student member, Isabel Kovacs. She's a junior at Morse. She's joining us for the first time. Welcome. Just wanted to let you know if you have any questions about anything with the board, either after the meeting or via email, you can get in touch with any of us about process. The other thing, just to mention, we will be going into executive session. There's an executive session scheduled for the end of the meeting. You don't need to stay in attendance, but so welcome. Hope you enjoy it. All right, we'll move on to item 4.0. Approve in minutes from September 22nd. You all have those minutes in your packet. Is there a motion?
I'll move in seconds.
Move to accept by Alan.
Sure.
Second by Bill. Take a minute to look those over. Any changes, any additions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve? Please raise your hand. None opposed? Okay, those are approved. Item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. I don't have any. None? Anyone have any adjustments? Okay, no adjustments to the agenda. All right, item 6.0, public session. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Okay, we do have second public session if you change your mind. No staff reports this evening. So we'll move on to item 8.0, committee reports. We'll begin with Bill. Item 8.1, facilities committee report.
The facilities committee has met since our last board meeting to review with Dave Richards the progress that has been made and is continuing to be made with the bond issue and review the expenditures with him. And I think we'll have a presentation relative to that this evening. Patrick, you're gonna talk about that again, the bond issue.
I wasn't planning on tonight because I wanted to finalize it, but I will set it up soon before.
Okay.
It's discussed in November.
It is, we still had some bills that were outstanding that were coming in, so it's not finalized yet, but it's gonna be considerably under what we had requested, which is a good thing for the taxpayers. In addition to that, we asked Dave, well, the Morse, the establishment of the Morse Committee and the ongoing process relative to Morse was discussed. And then in terms of our elementary facilities, we asked Dave, he's already provided us, we have tonight a list of potential problems and potential needs for the existing facilities. And beyond that, we asked him if he would start thinking in terms of a plan, maybe a decade-long plan, to move forward with some of these deficiencies and try and work to incorporate them within ongoing budgets over the years. So that it remains a budget issue and that we move forward with the priority areas within our elementary schools. If you recall, we asked for a five-year plan when we went out for bond. We're now telling him now, you know, we got the five, let's take a look further into the future because it's been determined at this point that all of our facilities are gonna remain open and in use. Therefore, we're gonna have to plan beyond the five years. And Dave's agreed to do that. And beyond that, we determined in terms of ongoing issues within the district that it would be best if we waited until after the first of the year to convene again and start to move forward with whatever day it brings to us or whatever may come up in the interim. So we, I believe we talked about February. Get the holidays out of the way and all of the West Bath issues resolved hopefully, and then we'll be in a position to move forward.
Any questions for Bill on what's going on with facilities? Can you just speak a little bit more about the status of the Morse High School Committee? What is that committee? How many people does it meet up of?
I'm gonna hand this one off to the tailback.
Yeah, we have nine people on our initial building committee for Morse, and they include Deb Clark, our business manager, Dave Richards, facilities director, myself. And then we have three board members. We have Alan Walton, we have Bill Burkins, and Steve August. And then for community members, we have David Mataramo, and we have Deb Keller and Steve Singer. So it's nine people of what I would call the initial building committee, which will get us again through the first three board stages of your Cullabon Sheet here. And, you know, they'll get us through. The first part is selecting an architectural engineering firm, having them do a new versus renovation study. If it's determined to build new, recommended, and the board supports that, then that same architectural engineering firm would do a site analysis of new possible sites for Morse High School. So that committee will go through that process. I gave you a handout tonight that we put a request for qualifications out into newspapers, put it on our website, and also put it on Bureau of General Services website. And the deadline was, I think, the 22nd. And you have a handout with the six architectural engineering firms that submitted their paperwork. So we will get the committee together. Actually, Deb, Dave and I are gonna look through the packets that we received tomorrow and possibly narrow down this list before we conduct interviews. And the representative from BGS will be part of that interview process. They won't have a vote, but they'll be a part of that process to make sure it's a fair process. So I'm hoping that possibly, you know, next week or definitely the week after, that we can have a day where we bring these, however many we decide, to bring in furnitures and get that piece done.
And BGS is the state agency?
Yes. So my hope is that November board meeting, that we have, you know, something to bring to you, a recommendation of which firm we'll go to. And my understanding is that we can, as a school district, we can use the architectural engineering firm that we decide to go with through the sessions I just talked to you about. Then, once it comes to designing a renovated or a new building, then we have the option to go out. We can stay with the same firm if we're happy and we think they can do a good job. Or at that point, we can go back out and go to a different firm. So, and then your Cullabon chart here is just a reminder of the process for West Bath home. But it is pretty self-explanatory, and I think the state has briefed up online the process.
At some point, could we fill this in with some tentative dates? Just so that we're honest. I mean, obviously, those days change, timelines will change, but just so we know if this should happen by this time or if this should happen by that time.
Sure.
That'd be great. Any other questions for facilities? Can I?
Is one of the options building new on the current Morse site?
Yeah, I think anything's up for grabs. You know, the discussion then would be, you know, what do we do with our current students? Do we have a Plan B? You know, this architectural firm plus the state, as well as the board, would have discussions about, you know, that site in general. Is that, you know, if it was deemed to build new at some point, is that site, which is so many acres, be sufficient to build a new high school or?
And if it isn't, then we own a building, we would have to do something with, right? I mean, there's a process to...
That's just another process we have to go through.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item 8.2, finance committee report. I'll turn that over to Patrick.
Yeah, the last meeting was October 2nd. And we discussed the banned financial information that Bill was alluding to. We checked in on how much money we spent, how much, how many bills we have outstanding. And then we focused on the West Bath withdrawal financial analysis. And that really was the crux of that meeting. And the next meeting, I think, is the first week in November, November 6th.
Yeah, November 6th.
We'll have to decide, Steve's out of country, whether we would meet at the beginning of November or not. But we'll set something up with the committee members. And for all of our committees, we did put something on our website asking for community volunteers, and we've gone through that process. And so I think we might have one new person, possibly on facilities. The two people on finance want to continue, and we didn't have any other further interest and policy. Again, same two community members, and didn't have any other interest expressed.
Okay. Item 8.3, West Bath withdrawal committee. I'll give you just a quick update as to what has transpired. We had our public hearing that the state requires as part of the process. We had that on the 22nd. Some of you were in attendance. The West Bath withdrawal group was there. That was held here. We had really good turnout and, you know, I think some very good questions and comments. And we heard from, you know, many different sides of the issue, I think, which was at least helpful from a board standpoint. On the 23rd, we met with the West Bath withdrawal committee at... We were going to meet at the town offices, West Bath Town Offices, and that moved to the fire station. The purpose of that meeting was to have a discussion about options, potential options, dealing with the choice issue. And they put an offer on the table. I sat in on that meeting because Steve couldn't make it. Dave was there as well. Patrick was there, Deborah was there. Jennifer, you were there. And so they presented an option, which was very similar to something that Patrick and I had discussed. And I'll give you a sense, I'll kind of give you a quick rundown of what that offer encompasses. As you know, from the agreement that we signed, West Bath, if they opt to pull out, they're obligated to send 75% of their middle and secondary school students to RSU One. We would be what's known as the school of guaranteed acceptance. So if they're sending 75% of their students to RSU, what happens to that other 25%? That 25% has choice. They could choose to attend RSU One or choose to go elsewhere. And what the West Bath group proposed is almost doing an even swap. We have about 30 students in the district in the RSU who do not live in the town of West Bath that would choose West Bath as their school of choice. So what West Bath proposed is that they would, the other 25% of their middle and secondary school students, they would send all of them to the RSU almost as an even swap for those students who would be going to West Bath. So from a financial standpoint, it's essentially a wash. And looking at the numbers that they put forth to us, they would have roughly about 30, 32, 31 middle school and high school students in that 25%. So again, what they were saying, what they're proposing, for that first year, 100% of their students would come to RSU One in the middle and secondary level. And in turn, we would send those 30 choice students to West Bath. I feel that it's a very clean solution. I know that a lot of, I got a lot of input from community folks on the 22nd and also via phone conversation and emails. They were concerned about the cost. What is gonna be the cost? And obviously, the board has been concerned about the cost. In this instance, we preserve the choice option for those families. Those kids would be grandfathered at essentially no cost in this region. So I don't know, Dave, if there's something that you'd like to add to it or if there's questions from the board. But my hope is that, we don't have language on that yet. Their attorney is gonna draft something up, and our attorney will take a look at it. At the same time, they were hoping that we could meet on the 5th of November to try and firm this up. They have until the 21st of November. And after that date, their group no longer has authority to make changes to the agreement. So the hope was to try and move forward on this as quickly as possible, both for the benefit of the West Bath group and the benefit of those families, so that they would know where they stand with regard to next year. So I'm hoping to have some discussion this evening and not take a formal vote, but just essentially get a thumbs up or a thumbs down from the board on how they would like to proceed. So I'll open it up to you folks if you have questions or comments.
Alan?
I think it should be made clear that it applies only to the students that are currently attending West Bath School. Other than that, I feel that this is a very clever and workable solution that was offered by West Bath people. And I personally feel that I can endorse it.
Alan?
Is this just for one year though? Or is it until these students are all the way through?
It's until these students are all the way through. And the way that scenario plays out is, so in year one, essentially, West Bath middle and secondary students won't have choice. They're obligated to go to RSU One. If their parents opt to go elsewhere, West Bath will guarantee us the revenue. That's year one. Year two, as that class graduates, that fifth grade class graduates, the number that we're sending is reduced to, I don't know what the number is, 25, 27, something like that. So all of a sudden, now there would be five students at West Bath who would now have choice. They could choose to go to the RSU or they could choose to go elsewhere. And as those numbers diminish, as those children are grandfathered out, the choice option for West Bath students at the middle and secondary level, that increases. Until eventually, after whatever it is, four or five years, we're back down to the 75%, or they're back down to the 75%. And those grandfather students have passed through West Bath.
As far as the numbers on both sides, Steve?
Well, we felt that, you know, it has, we have to see the language. And the language has to constantly be contingent upon the RSU students who are attending West Bath. As those numbers diminish, so would the exchange on the other side. So it's all contingent upon what happens with those choice students. Because you never know. You know, two years into it, if it were to happen, those families who, choice families who were attending West Bath may choose to have their children attended in an elementary school within the RSU. And so that would diminish those numbers greatly, which in turn would diminish the number of students that we would accept over and above that 75%.
That we would accept tuition-free.
Tuition-free, correct. Bill, can you speak into the mic?
That we'll be putting not only the legal issues, but numbers, fiscal numbers, to our elementary and secondary schools students like apples and oranges. Is there a difference, different tuition cost reimbursement for a high school student as compared with an elementary school student? And that needs to be part of the bargain as well, as far as I'm concerned.
There is a difference, but within this concept and within a $28 million budget, it's really negligible. And in order to, to me, it achieves the continuity of education for those families that would want to continue at West Bath while satisfying those other communities that felt strongly that we shouldn't have tuition dollars leaving the district if in fact West Bath opts out. So I think the difference, I mean, you can speak to it.
Yeah, and they broke it down as to number of so many secondary coming in.
Right. And that obviously will change from year to year. But again, the numbers are negligible. Jennifer?
Is there any scenario where that 25% number coming from West Bath would not be equal to or more than, or not be equal to the number of students that we want to keep in West Bath? So would the population adjust such that whatever is left over, that 25%, is not a number that would equal the students that we're trying to exchange for? The other question is, is that we're not talking to the West Bath school board right now. If we decide on this and they elect a new school board, and that school board says, no, we don't agree with this, then are we still tied to an agreement that we aren't making directly with their school board? And the third question is, if we didn't do this and we got that 25% over and above the 75%, that would be additional revenue? And we would be making money in that scenario instead of not making money on that 25%?
All right, hold the third question. Question number one, that was something that we discussed as a negotiating committee. And generally, we feel confident that the scenario you described wouldn't occur. But Patrick's going to run through the numbers to make sure. And again, the language that would come through always would be contingent upon the grandfathered students. So for instance, one of the things that the West Bath folks said that night was, and something I alluded to tonight, is of that 25%, say some of those students opt not to go to an RSU school, they felt that the community and the school board would be obligated to double pay, that they would pay us that tuition to offset the tuition that we're paying for the choice students. And they would have to pay whatever obligation they had to the student that chose. So we're cognizant of that, and we want to make sure, again, that all of the language is contingent upon our students going to West Bath. And not, that it's all relative to that number and not to whether they, whether the 25% is equal, greater, or lesser. We want to have the cost covered for those students.
Has to be at least covering the number of how many other students are each year.
But the number grandfathered is gonna go down every year.
Exactly. So it has to be at least that number, whatever that number is.
And to give you an idea, 124 right now total, in six to 12. And 75% of it is around 93 students. So we're down to about 31 is the discrepancy between the two right now.
Okay.
But you may have a lag class where all of a sudden...
We're double checking.
So we're gonna look into it. Your second question, the implications for that sort of agreement with a future school board? That's a good question, and it's a question for our attorney. My feeling is, if it exists within the agreement that was signed by both parties, it's fine. Because otherwise, then nothing within the withdrawal agreement could, would be valid.
Well, they could say they would do it. But my understanding, all these financial projections are not, they're based upon their percentage of our current budget, not future budget numbers. So they've been very accurate to say they could agree to do this, but they could agree to do it at the, their portion of the current budget as of it is now. And they could say, well, still do this function swapping students. In the end, it could be very different numbers because we're not looking at...
But the impact of their budget, for instance, the fact that they're committing 75% of their students to our district, that's part of the agreement. If the school board in the future says, oh, we don't have the funds to do that, or we can't afford it, or we want to go in a different group, it's part of the agreement. They have to live up to that. They have to find the resources to cover that.
For a period of 10 years.
For 10 years. So this would also be part of the agreement. So they would have an obligation to...
They cover it. They'll say they'll do it. But they'll do it at a X, Y, and Z price. So what they're doing is, if they're doing the function they've agreed with, is they're applying to what the contract says. But if the price changes, of which they will do that, either they'll, they'll do it based upon, they'll do that cost, that total cost of looking at now, the 775. I mean, I just, what I worry is, is that how is this potentially gonna end up costing the RSU townspeople? And so I'm trying to work the different numbers around it every different way, because what I heard is equally important as what we heard from the parents about why this is important, which I completely agree with. We also heard very strongly from the town, from the other municipalities, that said, even though we also want this, it is not something that we can afford to do in the consideration of us already losing so much money during the West Bath withdrawal. So we're not just talking about the cost of sending these kids. We're talking about that cost embedded in this big number. And so I think that was what I was trying to get to in the end was that, you know, what are we, what number? Do we have a number yet that would be, if we didn't do this swap, but we ended up getting those 30 kids that we're gonna be getting now, we guarantee those 30 kids? Those 30 kids, those extra 30 kids from the 25% that they don't have to send, could very well come anyway.
That's right.
So let's say they came anyway. We got that revenue. We didn't, we could actually get that revenue without kind of switching it for these other kids.
Correct.
Would that revenue really help us fill this big hole that exists from West Bath leaving?
Sure.
And I think I'd like to see those numbers as well. Just, just to be able to say, here's what we're, here's really what we're doing. We're not just not costing any more money, but we're also forgiving for going potential revenue.
But you have to, you have to ask the question, all of those 30 students that make up that 25%, how can you definitively say all of them would? 80% would? 50% would?
Right.
Because we can do the numbers right now. I mean, we can take the state's set tuition rate, which I think is listed here, and then you can verify it. But we could multiply that number by 30 students. And you would get a rough sense of what kind of revenue we would be looking at if we said, no, we don't want to do this. And then 100% of those middle and secondary students of that 25% came and attended. There's no... But there's no, there's no way to, to, to verify that. There's no way to guarantee that. So at least in this instance, we're guaranteed that those students will be coming.
Right, well, we're guaranteed, we're guaranteed that none of them will come is in the same effect of us doing this. Right? So the guarantee that not one single one of those 25% students would attend our schools is the same, the same will do this swap. Not that I'm against or against it, I'm just trying to.
I think, I think we, we ran some numbers I don't have to review tonight, but I think Bill was, we were kind enough to do this a couple of weeks ago, but look at the, I think since reform, the RSU, I think back even a few years before that, the percentage of students from West Bath that exercised school choice, you know, when they, when they had it obviously before. And what, how many students, you know, took advantage of that. That probably would be, the number of projects that would be more accurate than just to say, eight times, maybe thousand times every year.
I think your point is a good one, and that is, there, in doing this deal, there is potential revenue that we're leaving on the table. But I, I think from, from my standpoint, speaking as, you know, kind of Steve's replacement on the negotiating team, I feel that this is as close as we're going to come to a win-win that, that I could foresee. And again, as, as Dave alluded, the simplicity of this, it, it just achieves, to me, it finds balance between the two groups. Now, you are going to have residents from those communities who, who may focus on, that revenue may have come in anyway. And you're going to have families that are going to say, well, you've only, you're only covering the grandfathered students. What about potential students that want to come in? We're not going to be able to satisfy everyone. But I think this is the closest we can come to satisfying this conundrum that RSU has been faced with. Now, I did suggest, and you were there, and you were there, on two occasions, my solution, one of my solutions was perhaps they drop the whole thing. But nobody found that too funny, so I only suggested it twice.
Well, that would be a solution to it, is there?
It would be, yeah, it would be a solution for us.
And you don't think that we're anyway construing a precedent? By, even though we're not, even though we're not maybe spending any money with this, we're not setting any kind of policy precedent that says, we are allowing this group of kids to leave the RSU school? Because there was a question that came up at that meeting was that, you know, we are, we are, their tuition is being covered somehow. And we are allowing this RSU student to go to an outside RSU school? Do you think that anybody is going to construe that as some sort of precedent? That they'll come back and say, I want mine to go to Shepherd's? You let this West Bath kid go to Shepherd's, go to an outside school? Where is the discrepancy or in not allowing future precedent issues? I just don't want to open us up to that.
My experience, having been on the board a little while, is that definitely somebody will construe it in any way they want to.
Can we in the language do anything to clarify that?
We're going to do our best.
Okay. The quiet now, but Jennifer.
No, no, no. So I. Are there, are there any more questions or comments on this?
I understand your, your concern, but I think that both parties have acted and will continue to act in good faith on this. And that the financial analysis of it's extended and broken down more extensively will, I think, do nothing more in the end than confirm what we feel generally in our interaction with the people from West Bath. That this is a fair deal and a win-win and win situation.
We actually have a small, I guess minuscule group of students from West Bath that are exercising choice in other schools within the district. Are they factored into this? They're there now.
Right.
And we, and the agreement as it stands now, grandfathered still.
It was discussed at the meeting, but I don't know if it was factored into this, in the potential language.
I think it will be.
Yeah, because we're grandfathering, that's part of the basic agreement. We're going to address all.
I would, I would hope that, I would hope that we have some language by the end of this week.
Can I just get, again, this isn't a formal vote, but just around the table, thumbs up, thumbs down on whether this is viable?
I, I've got to see more, some. I don't think anything in my tenure down in Fisher gets generated as much comment as the idea of us paying tuition to send children to a school system which has withdrawn from the reading from the district. It really has generated, I was accosted at dinner the other night by a couple, a couple. And, and they were adamant. Yeah, I wish they were as excited about math and English as they are about this issue, but it has surfaced and it is, so I've got to see what we come up with. I'm not, I'm not prepared yet.
I think I want to weigh.
So there's thumbs up or thumbs down? I'm looking at your thumb.
The whole.
All right.
The reason, my concern has always been, what is best for all of the kids? Until I see the final figures, see what that impact is going to be, I'm not going to vote. Because I, I don't want to sacrifice anyone.
Sure.
It's against everything, I believe in. But when you're talking 30 versus, it could be hundreds? That might be impacted? I can't justify that. So I want to see the final figures. Basically, if, if, if it comes out the way you think it's going to come out, I would be for it. But if it doesn't.
Okay. Jennifer?
I would trust that you.
I'm looking at your thumb.
I know. I, I would trust that you and Patrick have, have an instinct of how this impact's going to be. And if it's the way you believe it's going to be, then I, I believe it's a really good solution for these parents and for our system. But that's trusting the both of you understand the financial, and you know, your instincts of the financial impact are right. But I'm, I'm willing to put the trust in both of you and say, who would support it.
Okay, good. We'll make sure you get the language and the finances before we take a formal vote. Okay, item 9.0, superintendent's report. Patrick?
Yeah, just, I don't know if you saw the article in the paper, but we had 26 Morse High School students receive AP Scholar Awards. And basically, it's in recognition of their exemplary achievement on their AP exams up until last May. Currently, just so you have an idea, currently we offer 10 Advanced Placement courses. And I'll just quickly go down through those so you can see, you know, if somebody ever approaches you about a well-rounded AP program, or whether we, what we offer, what we don't offer. I mean, obviously you can go to the program studies, but AP, we offer English Language, English Lit, European History, US History, Biology, Environmental Science, Music Theory, Studio Art, Statistics, and Calculus AB. On given years, depending on the schedule and also depending on student interest, we also offer Physics, and I think a couple other courses. But Physics is the one that comes and goes sometimes that we offer. And all of you know Kyle, I tell him, he's at Yale, I'm sure he's doing quite, quite well. But I think it's good to know that he earned National AP Scholar Award. And just listen to this, for having earned an average score of at least a four, one through five is, the score range for APs, at least a four on all AP exams taken. And scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. And Kyle self-studied for US Government and Politics because we did not offer it. And also took an AP for all, which is another option for students to do, that the state offers, an AP French. And he took 11 AP, AP exams in total. So I think it goes back to my motto, that education is what a student makes of it. And obviously, the initiative that he showed was remarkable, so congratulations to him as well. Golf team received the NPA Class B Sportsmanship Award. And girls across country won the KDAC Championships, just to give you a quick update. And the last thing I'll just mention is at Dyson School, we've partnered with Good Shepherd Food Bank and United Methodist Church to help sponsor families that are experiencing, I guess I'll call it food insecurity, is what I would call it. And the goal is to sponsor 50 families with backpacks that they would take home on Fridays and also during the vacation. And due to the efforts of a former employee of the basketball system, Irving Valet, and some other people that are volunteering their time, in conjunction with Sally Brown, we've already got enough to support 45 families. And so again, we hope to start this in November, go through the year. And we've talked about expanding it to other schools, you know, in the district. But you can tell from the principals' letters that in all of our schools, our students and our staff are doing quite a bit to support the community and support families in our communities. And last but not least, often you see a calendar and you see professional development days, and sometimes you're asking, what do we do on those days? And what do we, you know, what do they consist of? So, I mean, Judy can chime in too, but just to let you know, on October 10th, we had our high school staff working with remaining schools for the whole day on proficiency-based learning. We had Lucy Cawkins writing for all Keter Five. And compliments to Judy, she's brought in consultants from, well, one primarily from Portland School System that does a remarkable job. And we have teachers going into classrooms together and watching a teacher model, Lucy Cawkins. And just the response that we've got back from teachers has been, has been really positive. Restorative practices at Bath Middle School. And then we also had teachers that went to the ACTM Technology Conference in Augusta on October 10th. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Patrick? All right, we'll move on to the financial report.
Good evening. The report that you have in your packet is as of the end of September. And as of the end of September, we've spent 12.1%. And we've received 25% of our revenues coming in. So everything's moving along as planned. Pretty much finished with all our hiring and all that has come in within the amounts that we had budgeted. And I think the way that we're budgeting as far as unknown staff is, is working out well as far as choosing the middle of the scale for all the unknowns. We're a little bit short on tuitions coming, going to charter schools. So, but that will all factor in, okay. So, moving along as planned, we have auditors with us all week.
Great.
Any questions?
No, thank you. Okay, on to old business. Item 10.1, Review of Board Goals. You have two documents, some draft language from Jennifer and some draft language from Patrick on some notes that I put together. I would like to vote on these goals. So I don't know if we can have a discussion about incorporating Jennifer's language into Goal Number Three. But I'll leave the floor open.
I think that we talked about, I was looking back at my notes, we talked a lot about this ongoing communication need. So I was, I'm glad that that's, I'm glad that that's in here in terms of our internal mission. And I'm glad that it kind of is, reaches out to the community because I know, we heard a lot about through this West Bath withdrawal process, communication, communication, communication. I don't think it's just about giving out information, but it's also about making sure that information is understood. I think that's what I learned from our recent process. So I, I think that that, having that goal and kind of always asking ourselves, checking in with that goal a lot of the time, I think is, will be helpful for everyone. The, the thing that I put together was something I was staff asked to do a while ago. We had to kind of table it with all the West Bath issue. And I've never done this before, so I think it's reflected in what's in here. With the exception of, is there a way to be very clear that our ongoing maintenance costs, I think as you said, Bill, are part of our budget? Like how do, I'm not sure exactly how that happens, but maybe Bill can help me understand that a little bit more in terms of.
Go ahead.
I, I believe that our advocacy is for specific projects to be included ongoing as the years, the financial years go on. And a prioritization of those occurs so that as we move into 16, 17, we've identified that project which is most important overall to the region, be it, be it at the middle school or any one of the elementary schools. So it's the intent, and I, I think it's pretty well covered here. The one thing that, in your three points, that maybe could be incorporated that is already, are already there is the building level and district-wide staff to collaborate with the staff around how facility issues impact education in their particular building. And I would have no problem at all with that being incorporated.
Yeah, I was suggesting, thinking the same thing, that your number one be a third bullet point. And we add that to Goal Number Three.
Exactly.
Any other thoughts on the goals? I don't know if this encompasses what we had talked about in our goal workshop. And, and to sort of get it, the point you just made, Jennifer, we, just within the past couple of years, we've made a point of having review board goals on every board meeting. And I think it's important that we don't just overlook it, that we really say, okay, where are we, you know, with this? We, for instance, with the facilities, okay, we got a list from Dave Richards. Have we prioritized these? Is there a date when we'd like to see these done? And really stay on top of these goals, you know, communication. What are we doing? What did we do this month that we didn't do last month? Give us an example. I think it's important that those goals stay on the forefront and not just revisit them, you know, at the end of the year. So I think that's important. Anything else with the goals? Okay, I'm going to make a motion then, that we approve these goals as written with the addition of taking from the draft facilities goals number one and adding that as a third bullet point.
Under Goal Three.
Under Goal Three.
I'll second that.
Second by Alan? Any further discussion? All of us in favor of the motion? Okay, so we've approved the board goals a month earlier than last year. Thank you.
Maybe, maybe do it while implementing it.
Yeah, let's see the plan. All right, item 10.2, BMS Field Trip to Ferry Beach. This is not an action item, this is just a report. You had something in your packet, this is an annual trip that's been going on for quite some time. Patrick, I don't know if you want to speak to it?
Yeah, we sent an email out to you a while back, just because we were missing it, they went this morning. So we really can't approve it because they've already gone. So that happens sometimes, but it is an annual trip that we've done for the last, you know, since I've been here. Very valuable, so it's really for your information. And we didn't hear anything back from any of you that had any concerns about the trip, so it's more of an FYI tonight.
So I can call my wife now and tell her that my son can go? All right, item 10. All right, item ten point two, uh, excuse me, ten point three, second reading of policy GDA, support staff positions. This is an action item.
I approve, I, I move to approve as per.
Okay. Motion to approve is written by Dave, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve as written, raise your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. Item ten point four, second reading of policy GDF, support staff employment. Is there a motion?
I move acceptance.
Move to accept by Alan. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to accept, raise your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. Item ten point five, second reading of professional school counselor job description. Is there a motion on this job description? Move to approve by Bill.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. Okay, on to item eleven point O, new business. We have a couple of personnel items. Eleven point one A, resignation. I'll turn this over to Patrick.
Just, we've accepted resignation of Carrie Reed, grade four teacher at Phippsburg Elementary School, who's accepted another position up in the county, northern Maine, Lime Hill, and so, wanna thank her for her years of service at, at Phippsburg.
Okay. Item eleven point one B, we have two nominations.
The first one is Sandy Brand, and you can see from the backup, for both positions, we have two positions at Phippsburg. One is, the first one Sandy, grade four, for the resignation of Carrie, and then the other one is the grade two teacher, Adam Dean, which is, because of our class size being so high, approved another classroom teacher down there. So you can see we had seven applications for both, we interviewed two people, and Sandra's here tonight if you have any specific questions, but I think she's done a, a very good job of working the transition for the students, for the families, and I was actually down there today and visited Adam's class, because as I said through an email, he started earlier on, the sooner the better because of the class size, and that Sandy will start next Monday. So you can see their background, education, and where they were before coming to our issue line. Sandra, do you wanna add anything?
Sandra, could you just speak a little bit about, just talk to the board about how the school has handled this sort of crazy transition, and here we are in the middle of the year, and adding another teacher, and also replacing...
We, I've sort of looked at Carrie's departure like a maternity leave, and this would have, I've tried to explain to parents, this would happen, maybe a teacher going on on a long-term leave. We were very fortunate that Sandy applied for the job and saw the posting for the fourth grade position as we were in the process of hiring the second grade, and expressed interest in it. I've communicated with the families, the, Sandy's been in and met with Carrie, and gone over the classroom procedures and the schedule, and just the day-to-day things that are going on in the school. She's eager to start, but she has another job that she had to give a notice to. Adam has done really well, and he transitioned over the week last week, and he spent a couple of days setting up his classroom, and then he was in the classroom with Carla for a couple of days, and then took over, I believe it was on Thursday, and it was really amazing to see how well the kids adjusted to it. I think probably the kids have less of an issue with it than the adults do, but it's done, they've really done very well, and I hope that they're willing to work out to be really good hires. And I do have to add that I mentioned to Bill earlier in the year that I had a goal of getting to a hundred students at Phippsburg. We have two kids registered today, so we're at ninety-nine. If I can get those two homeschool kids back, I'll be at a hundred and one.
Let's go Bergen. Bergen's get with it. We also have a man on the, on the faculty, and I had some constituents that were concerned because we were all ladies down there for a couple of years down there. Boys abandoned us and went on to hire better things.
We also have a male speech person that started, I believe, last Monday. He's a consultant, but he is there on Mondays and Wednesdays.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
I know some very, very nice, very competent women though, Bill.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't, but there were some people in the community that mentioned it to me, that we gotta get a guy down there, you know?
I'm glad we clarified that. Thank you.
We need a male role model, so I volunteered, but I was too old.
Okay.
I move acceptance of nominations by the superintendent.
Okay, this is not an action item though, so...
Well, it is for Sandy.
Oh, for Sandy?
That's what I was saying.
Okay, so we're doing both, both together? Okay, thank you, Alan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bill? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, item eleven point two, approve agreement for service with Mid Coast Pediatrics. Patrick?
Yes, this is an agreement that you can see in your backup between the RSHU and Dr. Hannah, to provide consulting services to our school nurses, and it's done on an annual basis, so you can see the agreement. And again, she works closely with our nurses, provides, you know, a multiple list of services to help us as a school district.
Okay, any questions on this?
This is an action item?
It is. Motion to, move to approve by Bill?
Second.
Second by Dave? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand? None opposed? That passes. Okay, we have some first readings of board policy. Eleven point three A, policy GCA, GCSA, employee and volunteer computer and internet use. Any comments, questions?
We're talking a lot of information that has been developed around this issue because it's new, relatively speed.
Do you wanna address that?
To that end, Dean Emerson, Technology Director at the school, has vetted this extensively, and we've met at least twice, I recall, to go over language, and it has his approval, and I believe, and ask Patrick, has he approached this with the teaching staff as well?
I believe he has, and he's also talked with Drummond Witsum, but...
Yeah.
The only thing I noticed was, in the first paragraph, the last sentence says, "There is no exception of privacy and policy," perhaps there should be a comma after privacy, so it reads, "There is no exception of privacy, comma, and policy extends to all devices which connect." So adding a comma there, and then I'm assuming this is technical language, but in the second paragraph down under number two, and this is referenced further in other policies, it says, "Does not interfere with system operations or other system users." And in, when they're referring to system operations, they're not talking about the school system, they're talking about the, either the network system or the computer infrastructure. But it's incidental personal use of school computers is permitted as long as such use does not interfere with system operations. It could be read that it's, it's not affecting school system operations, that somebody isn't operating a computer, or doing something on a computer when they should be doing another task within the district. You see what I'm saying? Just a consideration. And then I just had one question, and you can maybe just give me a broad answer, how many staff within the district are issued computers? Do we know? Fall apart?
I mean, everybody has access to our computers, as far as laptops, you mean?
Yeah.
I think, well, our, professional staff, teaching staff, it depends, I mean, if they're over fifty percent, then they're getting them, but basically, probably around a hundred, then?
Well, we have a hundred and ninety-five teaching staff.
Oh, okay, then yeah, you're talking about a hundred and ninety-five, two hundred, but part-time, may not have them, but, you know, I'd say safely maybe than a hundred, seventy-five.
Just curious how many people this affects? Yeah. All right, move on to eleven point three B, GCSA dash R, employee and volunteer computer and internet use rules. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none. Move on to first reading of eleven point three C, IJNDC dash E, agreement to public student information on school department website and other online resources. Any questions or comments about this? I just had one. I know that, again, as a parent, I've seen this forum come home, but I'm wondering, how difficult is it, or how much additional work does it create for our support staff to kind of monitor this? You know, I noticed the other day that there were some photographs on the website, and we've been doing a good job about updating the website, there were some pictures from the flow program. Who is it that vets to make sure that those photographs, or photograph with a name, that we have the form that authorizes that?
Well, that, that form authorizes them to be on our website.
Right.
So we do double-check either through the principal's office, or through Dean and his crew, to make sure that we have those forms signed. I mean, the other piece is down below, when it talks about providing student names, which is a different thing, you know, for us to kind of monitor social media sites that we use, to make sure that we're, we're paying attention to that.
I just think it would be a really tough task. It's one thing to have a policy, it's another thing to be able to enforce it.
Right, at the same, at the same time, you know, I think every school system's probably experienced this once in a while where somebody, you know, it is a pitcher of a group, and a parent may get a little upset because they didn't want their student to be shown, so I mean, we are, we try to be sensitive to that.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? All right, item eleven point three E, GCQC, authorization to accept resignations. Comments, questions? Okay. And the last first reading is eleven point three F, IGA, curriculum development and adoption. Not much of a change here to the existing policy. Questions? Okay, we're done with those first readings, just be prepared to vote on those at the next meeting. We'll move on to item twelve point O, our second public comment section. Anyone? All right. We're making record time. Item thirteen point O, next meeting date, currently scheduled for Monday, November twenty-fourth, at Woolwich Central School. Still good? Are we good with that?
I'm still on the board.
Okay.
That's right.
Well, it's interesting, Bill, you bring that point up. Dave brought, brought up that issue, and I'll just bring it up quickly. The way that things are structured with the language around new board members is, your term, even if someone is elected to replace your seat in November, your term ends in January. The new board members are sworn in in January, so, so please be prepared to be here for November and December regardless of what happens in, at, at the election. Okay, item fourteen point O, executive session, to discuss labor negotiations. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
Sure.
Move by Bill?
Second.
Second by Dave? All those in favor of the motion to move to executive session? Okay, we are now in executive session, we will be moving to the library. We will come back and make sure you bring this document.